Uh second permit, food truck permit secondary, yes, so a second permit. So I guess. For like a second truck, like yeah, two vehicles, is that it?
No, second location. More than one location for the same truck. So one day. Okay, today.
Okay.
I thought we weren't doing permanent.
Well, what I'm saying is I do this broadly, so it can be.
Yeah.
And so whatever changes.
Yeah, cuz I'm seeing an annual fee and then the balance, but if we're not having any permanent food trucks, you probably aren't gonna have an annual fee. It's either be per.
Per event.
Per event or per permit, right, they're only being permitted for an event.
That's.
That right, so that means that you're paying for each permit individually and separately. Right, so there wouldn't be an annual fee, it would be each permit. Is 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 doesn't be associated with it.
Right.
That app.
Also.
I'm looking at. One eighty two, there seventeen F. Yeah, I would think that.
I think there's sort of it, like even if you look at locations, so. You know, it's permitted locations, so have an approved parking area, half us, two parking spaces. Or you can use, I mean, that that leads me to believe it's not an event where people are walking off, that's more people driving off, that's not really what we're looking at.
You wanna just do special events for the town property or.
Let's stop.
Echo, echo. If we're looking at doing this just exclusively for special events. Either on town properties or if someone, for example, wanted to have something on private property that food truck. That's looking for, I have to pare this down a little bit before we set up a care, that's all.
So I thought that was, that's the goal.
I thought that was our understanding overall in that based on previous discussion, that we didn't want to. Compete on the current business selling the same product. Um in a brick and mortar, so you know, you have these people that that have established businesses, whether catering, um deli or whatever. And so they're paying their their due taxes and everything else and fees to the town and and someone that's not would not be doing that. Eating against them, it's really not fair to them. I I think that we were pushing in baby steps in trying to get them to be there for bank driven.
That's that's hard. Is now, even if it's event driven. He and twenty two eighteen, we have, even if it's venture, we have five hundred feet away from any of this. It depends where you're going to allow them. Only gonna allow them on town property for town events. It it's almost like you don't even need to do the law because you can use the current peddling solicit. So that's really the discussion.
I think that we should do a permit based case by case basis, uh special events, uh not any, um you know. If people wanna bring a food truck, if they have an event, they wanna have a food truck, not a town property, we should allow it. Charge them, give them a special permit for that day, two days, whatever it is, and take it from there. That, you know, you know, we might have um more than four permits in a year. Uh I don't think we should limit the number, but we might make it a higher number before, because there's gonna be a lot of events. Yes, we don't want something that someone's gonna stand there and be there for weeks selling hot dogs, selling what, and it's more than a special event. So say, um, let's let's just say, uh. Maybe feel exact, they having a barbecue or a celebration of their. Area, whatever, they wanna bring a truck or two, we should limit on the number of trucks that should be brought to a place. Let's say they wanna bring two trucks, they'll come to the town and apply for a permit to have two trucks on. April first and second, we'll charge them a fee, they have the permit. One of the things, we'll have an application, just like when we do other stuff, and they have to provide the insurance and stuff like that, just like anything else, we give permits for.
So who gets the permit in that instance, with the truck or is it the event hall?
It will probably be.
It needs to be the truck, because they have to have the whole Department of Health situation.
Making sure that.
And no, you're you're correct, but the other, the other question comes. Does each one get approved, does each application get approved by the town board or, oh, you want every food truck to come to the town board? So there's advance notice and this board gets to regulate it. I am put in here, I can take out whatever you guys wanna do, these are just the questions.
So somebody generally.
Generally, on something like this, I would. I would say to start with, it should come to the town. That would be my, you know, and work session, if if all the paperwork's on, it gets submitted to the building department. They look at the paperwork, they make sure that the vehicle's registered, insured, they've got their Department of Health permit from Orange County, whatever else they're supposed to have and. The things they have to have. You know, you have the application embedded and make sure it's insurance, and make sure it's complete, then it comes to the town board. And then the town board can answer the question, is it okay to give it, give such a permit for this event in the way they want it? That's how I would recommend it to start with.
So there there's some changes. A lot of changes are gonna need in there. Sure. Um especially that it gives the G. You know, they be given away at temporary permit locations, um so I would remove the word permit location.
Yeah.
And then, and then the other thing is that food truck, any movable restaurant, truck, van, cart, bicycle, or other movable unit. So where where I understand in. In theory and philosophy, what we wanna do, we also have to consider the image of the town. Do we want a bicycle with two racks in the back selling food? At event, it's just, you know, do you wanna get to that?
Really, that's putting there for, you know, like the peddling ice cream.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a nice point, right?
Yeah, but they would have, somebody's not gonna be able to do something with it if they don't have the Department of Health permit. So that's really. That that's the bicycle thing that you envision, you know, somebody has a business where they have the big box on the front with the ice cream. Which is kind of a kid's party. Yeah, anything permanent's gonna come out, and if it's, if we're only talking about special events, then obviously I'm gonna, I'm gonna take some stuff out here. But but what what about the notion, is there general consensus at least for now, to these applications would go to the plan, I'm sorry. Building department and then come here for a work session approval.
Yes, yes.
Kind of much like other things.
Well, especially we have, we have, right, say we have pensail, right? The business, on the pensail, they come to us.
Oh, core plan or state.
We look at our little plans, we approve it, and we send it to the building department.
Right, once it's approved, but what I'm saying is an application shouldn't even come here until someone in the building makes sure all the. All the appropriate materials are submitted, so the board's not wasting its time saying, hey, where's the Department of Health? Yep, yep, you know what I mean, I'm which on that.
Then we will decide on the fee from then.
Well, uh the fees are the fees, those should be decided, I mean, listen, a lot of the fees and all the fees in the town are by resolution. In the fee schedule, Louisiana maintains, but we we will need to. We will need to amend the fee schedule once this law is adopted, cuz the way I have it in here now, it's annual, but any fees are gonna be set by the town board.
If you could get a check of what the other towns are charging for their permits, or how they, I don't, sometimes have the permanent food truck parks.
Yeah.
And then there are food trucks in other counties that are permanent places.
Mm-hmm.
Um I'm pretty sure there are towns that are charging some type of special permit fee when someone else brings a truck in, it's not permanent.
Right, well, especially generally, if you're asking people coming at the ask for a permit for the food truck for. Just a special event, it's gonna be somewhere in the. But that's okay. Otherwise, I give you worth of the job. Right, you know what I mean? I hear you, but listen, if somebody's having.
The guy that was selling hot dogs in front of home people would make what? Yeah.
Oh, how about the.
You have an application fee on this.
What is it, Louisiana?
Well, it's one seventy five for the permit, but then there's a, I think it's fifty or seventy five dollars when they apply.
But you know what, though, too, I I don't know what the right amount is gonna be, but end up being, but that's for like the guys who do fireworks, what, they're there for how long? You know what I mean, they can make up that hundred and seventy five plus fifty, you know, like, we're talking about one day.
Issue the social permits for the solo people that go to the door.
Mm-hmm. Right, but the fees. Figure out.
It usually is an hour. It's gonna be a one day or two day that somebody, somebody wants to have a car in their house and have a food truck.
Hit them too hard for something like that.
Well. That's.
You really have to, you really have to.
That's up to the board.
Think, is this going to be like a constant thing that we're going to have, you know, this one person always coming in? Uh you know, you need to define what a special event is, you need to define, you know, this one person is is it now becomes a a constant employee of of.
Once it came out of the South, that's exactly what I was thinking, I was thinking sometimes. It's gonna be coming in every day going, going, but it it's a Saturday, Saturdays are special, you know, like, and. They're gonna want it every Saturday.
Same person.
Yeah. So I I agree with it, you need to. No, I agree.
I agree.
Someone, someone's gonna find a way to get around it and become a permanent, you know.
Every day's a holiday, if you look up, if you if you go to Wikipedia and you look at the day, you see, you know, every day is a holiday. So.
But.
In in this solicitor's law, we also have, uh. I don't know, charges, if anyone breaks any of the code. Conviction, secondment.
I got. There's a section.
You need to address the thing where the food trucks into the town board.
What?
If we're doing food trucks into the town.
Right, so now you have, you have, you know, we have.
Two hundred and fifty anniversary celebration, that's your food truck.
But we have our town events, uh athletic events every week, right? Soccer, and so. Mystery session stands at the.
Little week session stand, right, soccer then.
So now the.
Yeah.
To.
Circle.
Oh, yes. So.
People do inquire when they're at pavilions, and they can bring food trucks, and you say no. It's never been known.
Right, so we have the pavilions, uh preserve every weekend from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So now we have someone coming in every, you know, you really have to think it out and, you know, make sure you leave no stone unturned if it's, it becomes a mission.
Especially in the warm weather when the box open. So we're multiple applications, there will be multiple applications for every weekend.
At the end of the day. We as a board.
But if you're capping the amount of times they could do it.
I mean, individually, yes.
Yeah, but. If someone's hiring the food truck. And it's the same, you know, somebody has an event at the pavilion in there. And someone attends that event, and says, oh, we had a great time, your food truck was great, what was the name of your food truck person? They're gonna engage, try and engage that person for somebody at July, that truck, so it's gonna be the same truck, the food truck can only come. But that's far in the ten more time, but then you start. Getting into a question of where do you draw the line, so it gets one person's allowed to have it at their event early in the year, but then the same event, same type of event. Pavilion, not gonna allow that person to have a food truck, it's gonna become a risk.
Now you're impacting the caterers, that you cater, regulation, or whatever, whatever it is.
Yeah, that's not even, the issue is, is you're going to have an influx in the warmer weather. If if people like to use food trucks, if they don't like to use food trucks, and Memorial Day, they're gonna give it all apart.
We don't have to allow it in the parks.
Every everybody will.
We don't have to allow it in the parks.
Don't. Unless it's a town sponsored, that's not, you can certainly, you can certainly say.
We we're starting off this, we can control it right now, I'm making this up.
So we can control this. To those locations that have a a pavilion. Be, you know. Why would we truck there, and then in the town parks, circle the park, we have picnic tables, we have bar, we have grill.
Uh we'll definitely cut down on the applications if it's clear that only town sponsored events. Will be a location for permanent food trucks. You have it for private citizens in the parks, in the pavilions. You're gonna get a title. Yeah. Okay. That takes care of that.
Control, now, this is what we hear now, it's controlling now. We're creating this, oh, you can control it, you know, with, this is baby steps, you don't have to just open everything up.
Okay. Oh, I'll repair this down quite a bit.
So.
I'll be changes and recirculate. Everybody else, everything on this, notes for me, do you want to send me other notes or comments, just email to me. Or. Work on.
Yeah, they consider it the hours of operation.
Yeah, absolutely. Right now.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. So. Tom is here, Tom wants to. Talk to the board. About the master.
I do.
Okay, now.
Like Tom, I've got three minutes.
Party now?
Yes.
Oh, there's just a headshot. Go on, that's done.
Eighty five.
Oh, well, it cost five bucks, but. I'm just a draft. Resolution. That has been reviewed by Will. And this is, yeah. Just make that test.
This needs to be.
Yeah, well, yeah, again, just, I don't know if you'll have time to do it, but I think you were trying to do it some morning. But anyway, there is a big movement. On Massadon, from the town has two famous ones, Scottstown and Bowser Bowser Road, in the meantime. The county of Orange, historian is helping the village of Montgomery install a replica. A replica Massadon that they're gonna display, uh, May seventh, I won't be here, I'll miss it. But again, there's just a lot of activity regarding Massadon, Orange County is one of the most prolific sites that Massadons have been found. There's just many, many, many of them. We've got two fully documented pages.
So.
Well, we have the Scottstown Massadon, and I've been in touch with the Orange County historian, Joanna Cor Young. And she is gonna try to get to Albany and find out where the Scottstown Massadon went, the last information we had in nineteen oh six was the Massadon was in Albany. And no one's gotten further with it.
Where was it, where?
Uh.
Where in Scottstown?
So right over here, just one quarter mile southeast of the Scottstown Church, down behind the Hasbrook Heights subdivision, that little road there.
Yeah.
Across from the cemetery, there's a pond right there, I've been to it, and they didn't find anybody else there. That's where it was found in eighteen forty three, I'll give you a little more of the story, by Farmer O'Connor. Who was digging marl in a swamp pit, marl is a natural fertilizer made of lion, clay, and sand, and he's digging this by hand in eighteen forty three, loading the wagon. And he starts hitting, finding bones, big bones. And by the time he finished, he had a full fledged Massadon. Had a couple people look at it, and they just sent it, sent it over. Wow, so if we can't get, are these horns? No, as well, that's close, it's called the tusk, they're they're like twelve feet long, and the Massadons are smaller than white mats. Massadons are about eight feet, nine feet tall at the shoulder, Massadons are sixteen and seventeen feet tall at the shoulder, that's what I'm, tusks are long, really curvy. About twice as long as Massadon, another place, uh, we actually have a a Massadon on the play in Middletown at Orange County Community College, named Short. That they found, yeah. That they found, yeah. No, it's in the. Uh.
Wait, there's one, there's two, Tom.
Well. I'm I'm working on. Maybe we'll get some brown penetrating radar someday, then I can really look. But that's.
Just watch it, just gonna videotape him, so then, so what's the resolution?
Well, the resolution is just naming the Massadon as the mascot. So we can maybe do a little bit more.
Official mascot of the town hall.
Well, yeah, some people don't like the word mascot. Unless I dress up as one.
Right, and you don't have to dress up as one. How about, the mascot time to show up.
But whatever, you know.
Yeah. You have to dress like.
Mascot.
You got my vote if you dress up.
Oh.
You get him an outfit.
Oh, the last pictures I'm sending around.
What it would look like.
Sir, get him a microscope and I'll bet.
The pictures that I just passed around now, they are actually on display at our park out there by Car House. And somebody asked, well, how come you've got a lot of citizens for the town walking out there, how do you get an elephant in with the citizens? And it really made me think, I said, well, you know, this animal, or these animals, were actually hunted, the one about the road, it's determined to have been butchered. And it was butchered by paleo people ten thousand years ago, so the the people aspect is is paleo people. That's why they recognize it's former, former, former citizens of the town of Longchamp, that's the only way I can justify. Oh, yeah, you know, I know.
Should we name?
Well, actually, okay, well, I I have been thinking of a name, and I'd like to call it Dottie Jack, named after. Dottie and Gracie, and and Jack Foster, the daddy.
Huh? Maddie.
Oh, my, whatever.
There's two of them.
Well, one's, well, yeah, there's, that is just a, you know, representative skill, and I don't know what it looked like, but the town did have two.
There was two of them, so we gotta name two of them, so the one of eighteen, eighteen, the one of eighteen forty three, do we know what happened to it?
It went to Albany, isn't it?
And the one from two thousand thirteen.
Was.
Still there.
Was privately owned by a family, I think, by a group, is that right, yeah, and so they unearthed it, they paid for it, and we've got five hundred page book.
We are, we're busy.
It was sold, the head alone. The head, the head alone was sold for forty thousand dollars.
We don't know to who, anything.
Well, it's documented somewhere. But so.
Don't.
But what they're.
We don't have it.
No, we don't, but like what I showed with the county historian, what they're doing on Montgomery, they're they're replicas.
Oh, this ain't the real one?
But no, it's a replica, and they only cost about fifty thousand dollars.
Probably fifty thousand.
Yeah, well, compared to forty thousand for the head, it's fifty, it's, they're about thirty to fifty thousand dollars for a replica.
So, shall we hold and recognize them as former inhabitants of the town?
Yes, yes, that I like better, yes, let's do that. Former inhabitants of the town.
Former indigenous inhabitants of the town of Longchamp.
So my.
Okay.
So.
We'll, we'll, we'll vote on this tomorrow.
As a job.
I just saw his, um. Yeah, some.
One point eight million years ago. Right, like, yeah.
And we're in the Holyoke Street Park.
Obviously now, one one point eight.
Well, that's what I found.
Just one point eight million this place is.
I mean, we've never had a mascot, right, in town?
Mascots are a lot, you gotta bring them to the mascot to an event. That's what a mascot is.
So we. We'll get an.
You gotta. Can I change the Lebona outfit to a Messina? Sorry.
If you was to get an outfit.
I couldn't, I didn't, if you had another.
Leading me down a path I don't think I wanna go.
I I would like to know if the one in Albany still exists.
Well, that's what.
And I would like to know if it exists, and if in Albany, do they, do they give credit to the town of Longchamp?
Yeah, exactly, so Joanna said she's gonna start working on it.
Is the only one stayed by? No.
Well.
There's one right down the road from me.
Oh.
But there were more than.
Yeah.
One of my.
Massadon to the town. Lots of.
I don't think we're getting any credit up in Albany.
They just said that they were founded in Montgomery.
Right. Albany is the one from town of Longchamp.
Okay.
So I I would assume that they ain't going to get credit the way it was filed.
So like when somebody tweets for the Hall of Fame, they say.
I guess. Thank you, Tom.
So, that's my story, and anything you guys can do, I'd appreciate it, and I'm just, uh, it'll lead to bigger and better things, and we'll talk about them later.
Thank you, Tom.
The bigger, better things only cost five or six months.
Okay, Tom, thank you.
Well, thank you for this opportunity.
We're gonna. All right, so, next.
So. Probably find it very interesting.
Yeah, I want. Do that with the best for others, then, so.
Yeah, that's all.
Oh. I know I have that. Whatever. I got plenty of other.
Obviously.
Tom, Tom, keep stopping.
I'll take it back.
Okay, next, we got this, uh, stickers for Touch a Tree. Oh, go, 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 Touch a Truck.
Plant a tree.
I don't mind my minds. Yeah. But helmets, um. We've got a thousand helmets, so thousand stickers. Each one. Uh, make a motion, purchase a sticker.
Five hundred and eighteen bucks?
Yes.
This is the stickers for the budget truck. For the health.
Yes.
Card hats.
Yes. Yes.
What's your point?
Yes.
Would you bounce it?
Yeah.
Make sure mine.
No.
Bounce it.
Yes.
Two five, so on.
Yes. Okay. So. April seventh, we're gonna have. Um, okay. I'm thinking of things that we're gonna do that day, Thursday. Yes, Thursday, the seventh. And we need to celebrate town. One thing I thought about having pipers. I'm always like, pipers, I think, we need to get pipers here, and we contacted, uh, Hudson Valley. Um, pipers, and. They they want it to show up, or there's a cost, you won't, I guess. Like a hundred dollar. Uh, a person. A two fifty, it's two fifty to come, then a hundred dollars a person, am I correct?
Two fifty, if if they just send one person, and then, uh, or if they do six, then six hundred.
No, it's a hundred dollars a person, so they've got, say they send six, three back, pipers, a snare drum.
And a bat.
And a commodege drum, and something else, and it'll be, uh, six hundred dollars. Or we just bring one back piper, and it'll be two fifty. Um, I'm thinking, you know, bring in to, you know, play a couple of songs, amazing grace, uh, you see what else?
Awesome, military.
How many songs, about five?
About.
About five songs, um, I think they may be. Um, I think they may be bringing to start. For the event and, uh. April seventh. Somebody here, Tom Hoar.
So we, uh. Currently have a resident at, um. He, this is what he played the pipe. And so this is son. And he was in circle hole. And so when you reach out and get it, it's only his time. And, uh. If in a sudden come that phone.
Yep.
Specialism.
In doors.
Yeah, the boardroom. To be able.
Yeah, they just the back punch would be fun.
I've never, I've never heard that pipes indoors.
Really?
Yeah, I've never.
When Dottie, when Dottie, the historian turned eighty, they had bad pipers and John Tarbiston. But they had bad pipers and. It's the gentleman from circle hole. Marty Town.
Oh, yeah.
Walked in and walked around and went like that.
When, um, can he do happy birthday? Yes.
Right, they can't.
Great.
When. All my experience with bad pipers. All outside, all, you know.
Funeral.
Yeah, outside, but I. Give you an idea, this past weekend. At the ten thirteen that, um, was sponsored over, um, on a kill. Pipers inside. And there were at least ten. Of the band. With snare and bass.
Yeah.
I've been booking a lot. It's indoors. You know? All my experience has been indoors.
Let's see if we get it for free.
Yeah, I think. Okay, so.
Yeah, I'll tell them a couple more bucks. I listen. Two fifty come around. Once every two years. I think you said cold same for bad function. So how that work?
Okay.
Sure.
So your son, she turned out a man.
I'll say Sarah, my man, sorry, gonna reach out.
You gonna reach out to him, Eric? Do you know where they are?
Yeah, I think I know where they are. I'll reach out.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Johnson, you chop.
I went to school tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, one of these.
Okay.
Or his son plays, so I'm sure he'll get some to join us. Snagging.
Okay. Um, just, I just wanna add, uh, everyone. Patty's Day. Don't you see this the other day, uh, last Thursday? Great success, I think. Looks great. The live music. Uh, was fantastic. Something different. I didn't know he was singing and I was in the back. Oh, I heard a song that come out. I thought it was like his computer. It was actually him. And I was looking around the room and I saw a lot of seniors, the senior chair and. Dancing. And then. Linda got up and started dancing. Um, and I believe that was your mother.
Yes, my mother.
I didn't know that. And it was great. And, you know, it was.
A new theater.
It was, it was, I think, you know. I, I, I tried corned beef. It was good. I enjoyed it. Uh, maybe took some of that, um. Stuff.
No, Irish soda bread, they put in the sauce.
Oh, yeah. Lot of butter. It was good. It, it was good. We, we, you know, um, I think everyone had a good time. You know, we had the nine night holiday beer. Which went, we had. Tom as our tallest leprechaun. And going around with the beer. And I'm pretty sure that, you know, a lot of beer was gone. I don't know who drank it, but a lot of it was gone.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty good. Took a lot of work. Had to talk to people.
So before we get onto the metro, to the kind of babies, any, anyone got anything else to say and anything wanna add, uh? Uh, Johnson?
I'll search.
Martin? Valentine?
Nope. Nope. Good job by anyone. The, uh, computer policy. I was expecting after last meeting. That we'd be sending out an email regarding criminal policy. Um, and changing that, making sure everybody changes their password and making sure. That, um, everybody writes the password and then blow it in your office. Are you doing that this week?
Yeah. Anything else? We'll start the kind of daily operational review. Tony, uh, step in here, please. So I just, you know, we've been talking about this. I mean, for my. Thirteen weeks I've been in office and prior to that, um. So I just want, I wanted to address it. And hopefully we can move on and figure out what we need to do. Figure we go through it, that's a board. And discuss. Back in April. Kind of Davis. Davis came out with this, um, audit, operational review. Of the town. Heard this. And my understanding, some stuff had been addressed back in my shoulder during some meetings. So we got thirteen. Items. That's right here. I put the control in. Because this is the heart department. That's what it was. Uh, done. So we think we'll go one by one. Discuss it. What needs to be done? If anything needs to be done, we'll go from there.
Can I, can I ask you a question? These are all. Um, the town board is required to adopt. Any accounting policies, we're also required to review. Um, the home policies on an annual basis. So shouldn't this start be, what are our accounting policies? And where are they? And can we get copies of them?
Okay, so over the last couple of weeks, you kept saying you don't wanna vote on things because until we have to make the kind of babies. Operational review audit. So the thing is, if there's nothing exists, let's talk about this audit, the way we wanna talk about. And the way we need as a board to figure out what's going on here. And then we go from there. You know, right? You, you kept saying you're not voting on to the kind of babies is.
Part of O'Connor Davies is having a policy and having written and reviewing them.
Right, so they have, I'm trying to find out, where are the written policies right now?
What we have. What we have from the fall. Is the resolution is adopted in September with regarding, uh, what the, the initial stuff that was drafted up. The next step is to continue doing that, and where there aren't policies. Is to create them as a board.
Right.
And adopt them. And I think what the supervisor, I don't know what words to mouth, but I think that's the goal of having this discussion. So what, what things are missing. Can be drafted up like this one was, and we move forward. I believe that's the goal.
I'm, I'm just trying to make sure. So, so the idea is, is we have, we have.
Absolutely correct.
Other than the one, what we have, what we did in the fall. Right. This is all I'm trying to figure out. Well, other than what we did in the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Right. We have no written accounting policies at all. You know, we have some.
Why didn't bring the books down? We have books on the counter in the office of policies. Let's go bring the books down here if you like that.
I mean, we, we have policies in the books. If you're looking for new policies, updated policies, that's a different. No, no. We, back in September eighth, we had the, the O'Connor Davis. Firm here and went through policies and procedures in detail. Some of which you, you provided and, and they, they went over them and, and we brought some of them together. And we voted on those procedures. And, and Neil. Will just provide us the resolution that mentioned, um, things within the accounting department, the payroll department. And so I wasn't only the accountant. So, yeah. He, Jordan is right. We should go over what we have. And let's keep moving forward. I understand. And I'm not talking, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about it in general. Okay. So I understand that we passed one policy.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Um, accounting departments have a lot of policies. The town board is required to review all those policies on an annual basis. Okay, we have not done so in six years. Okay, so if they're sitting on a shelf somewhere, we should have those policies. We should know what they are. We should review them to ensure that they're up to date. And that they're accurate. Um, and that's essentially just the list report is saying that we need to make sure that we're reviewing all those policies and making sure that, that. That we have clearly defined roles within the accounting department. Right? And that all our policies are up to date, right? And are being accurately and implemented correctly. And. Listen, I'm finally going through the report. Fact is, is we still need to review those reports, these those policies. So those policies need to be provided to the town board. And I've asked numerous times for the policies, and I've never gotten them. You know, and, and unfortunately I had to go to the route of actually trying to boil them because I, I can't get a hold.
Okay, so, so what? For purposes of this evening.
All right.
Having said that. For purposes of this evening, Tony can certainly go through this and, and let everyone know, yes, there is a policy for this. Or no, there isn't a policy for this. And if there is a policy, get it in front of the board. In a, you know, in the near future. And if it needs to be tweaked, so be it. If it's good the way it is, so be it. So perhaps that's the best way to go through this. Tony will be able to do that, right?
Yeah. And I wanna keep in mind that this only covers four areas of the accounting department. Because there are many more areas of the accounting department that weren't, weren't going through, that we do need to go through.
Okay, but again.
And, and.
We, wait, this is a good start. Start somewhere.
No, I know. And I'm, I'm.
And there. There were other departments that would mention.
Okay, we gotta start somewhere. All I kept hearing over the last.
No, I understand.
The kind of days.
Okay.
We're here. We gotta move forward. We're gonna dwell on this and, and not focus on trying to resolve whatever issues, if there are issues. And the different things that were done back in April of twenty twenty-one. We have a, a review here. I kept hearing from you that you didn't wanna vote on any financials. You did a press release on this. So I'm here to discuss it, to see how we can move forward.
No, I'm sure.
And deal with this.
I'm sure.
So that's why I put this on here, so that there's thirteen items on here. We'll discuss them. We need to expand on them, then we will. Okay, so the first one is. About the personnel roles and responsibilities, finding the control process in ones. What they said is that basically not the best use of the time. And the control, on my understanding, stop processing vouchers. Sometimes because of, especially now with not having our accounts payable here, um. Doesn't say she cannot process a voucher. Says she shouldn't. She, that's the best use of her time because voucher, when you have multiple reports. It takes up a lot of her time and she should be. Focusing on higher level responsibility. However, sometimes she has to voucher if people are not here and it has to be done. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, that's something I kind of mentioned here. We've been in a position several times in the past few years where we've been without a staff member for a medical leave for extended periods of time. So, and especially before I had Casey here, I would have to step in and voucher, and that does put me behind on my work. But it has to be done. Or if somebody comes in and like, I need a check right now, I need to be able to voucher it to get the check printed. So.
But we can have.
That's why that took place.
But we've left Casey through our voucher now.
Oh, definitely. I mean, that's what I've been doing.
That shouldn't be your role anymore. Your role, you should not even have access to the sub ledger. The accounts payable ledger, you should have access to.
Well, we, we may still end up in a small staff of me needing to voucher something. So the access, again, the access wasn't an issue. It's more of.
Because.
Best use of time.
We implemented new procedures related to direct voucher. Are we following the new procedures related to direct vouchers? Are you getting pre-approval for the route, the direct voucher? Or is that being signed off on in advance?
Yes. I mean, I've not needed to voucher too many things, but there was something recently that I brought down to the supervisor's office. I had him sign off on it. As soon as I vouched it. We discussed it first. I prepared a voucher. I came back, we signed the voucher because again, it was necessary for me to.
According to this. Said. Then of emergency. Time controller. Who process a voucher.
The, the issue being that they specifically say that you shouldn't have the super user access. And she shouldn't have access to the sub ledger. Because that's a conflicting responsibility and that actually puts the security of the system at risk. By doing that. And also makes the incidents for mistakes and other things to be high. So have we gone to Edmonds and have he taken away the super user access? The way, Ed, the way, um, O'Connor Davies stated in the report.
So it was actually Edmund's recommendation that the controller is the super user of the system because that's how all the towns are set up. Not saying we can't change that. But the next question is, who would be the super user?
There is no super user. So what happens is it's clearly stated that.
Well, split between two people.
O'Connor Davies. O'Connor Davies clearly stated that what they.
Where is it stated? See, as I got.
I mean, that's the issue we have is who is the other person that would be delegating to?
No, what it said was, it should be, there should be admin access, right? Which is kept in a sealed envelope in the supervisor's office. And if you need it. You have to go sign it out after citing specific reasons why you need the super user access. And that way, then any, and any entries that you do. Would then need the supervisor's approval before it gets entered into the system. Then you go change the password after you've been using it. And then it will go back into the desk to the supervisor.
So.
So does that interfere?
Yes.
Can you read that to me?
But super user access.
Wanna read the whole report to you? No, I'd like you to read the part that you're making up.
I'm not making it up. It's.
Super user access though is not required to do a certain type of entry. Super user allows you to modify other people's access.
But you're part of being a super user access means you have the ability to adjust the system. And what they're saying is you shouldn't have that ability to.
Actually. They should be loaded one person with that access.
It's saying.
Saying that it shouldn't have it. It's saying that there should be more than one person. It should be more than one person.
It's, it's, it's a system of control. And so that way, when one person doesn't.
You reference the document and reading the document, that's it. It should be, it should be separated.
Right, you shouldn't have it.
By more somebody else. It should be separated by more than one person.
Who do you think should have it?
I don't think anybody, this is what I'm saying. No one should have it. It's like the password. What happens is, is you create an admin. Essentially, you, and that super user admin password, right? It's an account. It'll be a separate account. It'll be maintained in your office. In a desk, in a lock desk. Okay? If anybody. Being her, only, if she needs to do something in the system where she would need that access. Because of the sub ledger, she would need to make an adjustment and, and she would have to come to you. She would have to say, this is what I needed for. She would have to get approval for what it is that she needs to use it for. And then you would authorize her to be able to do it. Once she uses the password, password then goes back to you. Okay, and then you would go to Edmonds and you'd say, I need a new password for this account. And then that way she wouldn't be able to access the, the, the account that the. No one should have ultimate authority over our system. That's part of the controls in the, in, in the system. The fact that nobody has control to do whatever they want in our system. That creates huge weaknesses in our control.
Let me ask this. Is there anything? Is there any reason why?
Let me ask this. Is there anything, is there any reason why? Removing super, super access, master access would look a good job.
No, see, I think there's a misunderstanding of what super user access means.
They're calling it system administrator.
Right. So what that means is I have full access to every module in the software. To give other people access to their roles.
But you have access to every module and you're not supposed to have access to.
So I'm saying, no, it's not. There's never an instance where I I have to make this adjustment in the ledger and having super user access affects that. It's not, they're not related.
But they're saying you have access to the sub ledger.
So so I would have access to, like, I guess I need an example. Like, what are you saying? Like, I could write a certain type of.
You're not supposed to have access to the.
I would absolutely need access to the AP system to do my job.
That. That's what it says. You're not supposed to have access to the to the sub ledger, which would be the AP system. That is the director of payable, and then the supervisor would oversee that. And then you would essentially be in charge of the accounting, so general accounting. And then you would be overseeing the general account.
So the first thing is our software does not include payroll. I mean, that's mentioned in here too, but we do out, we outsource payroll to AP. So our software doesn't relate to payroll at all, but this super user access is simply that it allows me. Because somebody needs to do it to give, like, if you want access. I speak to admins and say Neil needs access to be able to only view these reports. Eric needs access, just as an example, not saying I'm giving it to him. I'm saying Eric needs access because he needs to print accounts payable checks. I find out from admins what level access lets him do that without posting something.
But you're.
There are levels of access for other people to do work. It's never that I'm making entries to a ledger because I have access.
Every ledger in the system and you're not supposed to have access to our sub ledgers, right? That's not where your role is. That's not your job responsibility. Not only that, it creates a conflicting responsibility for you. Because by you having access and being able to make changes within the sub ledger, right? That takes away certain controls that are in place, okay? And that's what this report says, and that was the conversation I had with O'Connor Davies. And all it does is take away the ability for you to be able to make changes within the sub ledger.
So if I'm overseeing someone's work and now they can't complete the work they're working on, which is a situation I have in there right now, and I need to step in and do it. Now I have no access to the software.
So then the question is, is are you, are you telling me that you're you're doing AP? That you're doing accounts payable?
I'm doing whatever needs to be done, especially right now because I don't have an accounts payable. Again, when you have a small staff and people are out, I can't be locked out of access because I'm.
Here's the, here's the issue. There there needs to be oversight and there needs to be controls. But if you're telling me you're accessing the sub ledger, you're doing AP.
So you can say sub ledger, meaning what though?
Accounts payable is a sub ledger.
Okay, specifically accounts payable, we're talking about.
Accounts payable is one of the sub ledgers.
I can voucher in an emergency. That's that's clearly access to accounts payable.
You shouldn't be doing that. Now you have the staff to be able to do it.
So so this thing that was put in place says. That I can voucher if I need to, meaning I need accounts payable access to do that.
Then you should be able to go to the supervisor and then he can give you the super user access to be able to do it.
So we should have access to the sub ledger.
Sub ledger, the access to the sub ledger is based on who is responsible for those duties. So this is part of the clear delineation of duties. The accounts payable person has access to the accounts payable ledger. You, as the supervisor, oversee accounts payable, okay? So therefore you are supposed to have access to the sub ledger as well. Your name goes on all the checks. So therefore you should have strict oversight over your signature that goes on every check, which means that when the check runs are done. You should be standing above the person doing it, making sure that once, when that check run is done, that you're reviewing every single check. Right? Against the audit it warrants, right? To ensure, right, that everything matches. That is your responsibility, right? The responsibility of the controller is to audit all at once, okay? And then you have the deputy controller, which is doing all the bankrupt reconciliations. That ensures a segregation of duties and that everybody is sticking to their proper rules. Then you audit all, then you review all the bank reconciliations. So all the bank reconciliations and all the bank statements go to you so that you can review everything. And that way you know what, that everything is being done properly. And that there's proper oversight over the accounting function.
So you're saying I cannot, the accounts payable has to respond, has to report to me?
Yes, it has to report to you. It is, absolutely, hundred percent.
I disagree with you on that.
Okay, you can disagree with me, but you can call the controller's office because she audits the warrants. She can't oversee accounts payable. That's the problem. If you want to say that she want her to oversee accounts payable, that means the board has to take on the responsibility of auditing warrants again. Because then you're creating, you have to create the proper segregation of duties and the proper structure of accounting. And then, and the only way to do that is to ensure that there's, that everybody is doing the right role, okay? And if she's overseeing everything, then what ends up happening is, is that's how you get behind. That's how mistakes happen because then there's no checks and balances. All internal controls is, is the checks and balances. So you have the responsibility of overseeing accounts payable. You have to have access to the system. It clearly says that in here that you should have access to the accounts payable system. This is your signature going on it. You should be reviewing all the checks that go out, making sure it matches that she's auditing warrants. And that those audited warrants match the checks that are going out the door. If we did that, then we wouldn't have to approve the warrants at all. If this was being done properly. And then that way you have look through access into the accounts payable. You do the pre approvals. Or we can set up the pre approvals where you only approve a certain amount and we have the department head for these other things, right? And then what ends up happening is, is then you end up being the guy who who has oversight. You're doing the proper job. Okay, that oversight.
I got that. So I will reach out to the controller to oversee on that. But now, let's get back to. This review. So you're saying that in number two, that she should not have this super user type of view.
Again, this is not, I don't mean to cut you off. This super user access has nothing to do with me accessing accounts payable or any other sub ledger. Super user access simply means I have control to give all the users of the system access. That's what this is talking about. I have system administrator access privileges. Allowing me access to the software modules so I can give access to other people. So that's what that. But accounts payable absolutely needs to be responsible to the controller in order for the office to function. And I would really challenge you to find another town that's not set up that way. Which is software only. Well, that's not what super user access is.
We need to realize, find out exactly what O'Connor Davies.
So it's what we need to do is find out. If they. If there's a difference between uh super user, the master password that allows you to do everything. And and override everything. You know, master password versus administrative password that enable. Control it, put it up and manage the staff.
Right, that's all I'm saying. Super user access said, I have full access to every module in that software and it allows me to assign roles to other people.
It also allows you to change it.
So again, if you lock me down, if you only access an accounts payable, when Mary can't reconcile accounts payable at audit time, which happens every year, I apologize. When it can't be reconciled and I need to step in and do it and I don't have the proper access, then how do I complete the work?
Then you have the password. So that's that's part of the process is that.
My question here, how often do you need that? How often do you have to do that? Because if it's something, if they come back and say there is a difference between master, master password. And administrative password, so you don't need the master password certain times in a year, three times a year.
So, super user. There's a chart that defines every piece of these ledgers. There's a general ledger, there's an accounts payable. There's, there's a lot of categories. I have a nine in every category. So it allows me to set up other people. Somebody has to be that master person. If the supervisor would like to be the person.
But.
I don't care. It happens and somebody will call me up and say, I need to do this procedure right now, this process. I don't have access to the screen. So I call admins and say, well, they need a little more access, but not full access. Which number do I put in? They tell me, we update the record. This person can now go do their work.
Right, but I'm.
So if I'm not that person and the supervisor is, then people will be calling him.
But I'm trying to understand.
That was a couple of times a month, maybe. Maybe it's not that frequent every month.
There's a separation. If there's a separation that is is doable in that. You don't need super user to do your job. Administrative access. It's two totally different things. And so we need to speak to admins to see if there is.
Well, there's, that's kind of administrative access. It's all it's saying is I'm the person that gives other people access. It's not allowing me. It's administrative access. It's the same.
The master password that allow, it's open ended type of thing. And.
But that's what I'm saying. There is no master password that allows you access to do a function. That's not the thing.
The solution to this is tomorrow. I'll answer these questions and hopefully we'll get an answer. If that's what it takes, then then we'll do that. As the administrator, and there's a a super password that could change all this.
That's the thing, that's not.
I I I can't.
I can show you the screen. It's just, that's one thing.
You can call O'Connor Davies. You can call and 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 then you should make sure that you know exactly what they're talking about.
Okay.
The idea is, is that she has the ability to basically make entries into the sub ledger. She's not supposed to have access to making entries into the sub ledger, right? Into the accounts payable system. We have no formal journal entry process. We stated that in O'Connor Davies report. So we need to make sure that we formalize these processes and that's part of the process. So if she's making changes.
There are times where no one else is available to make the entry for the emergency situation.
Right, so then.
Or a situation where there's a short staff deal going on and there's no choice. But someone in the department to make those entries and provide the access. If she's not gonna do it, somebody else in the department to make those entries. We have to account for our work. Work account, but I have to consider the situations where it can't be helped.
No, it, listen, I understand that that there are situations. That's why you have the massive.
That's what the supervisor is saying.
But it's not a password. That's what I keep trying to tell you. There's no password that allows you to.
It has to be addressed.
There'll be a running list. As we go tonight, there'll be a list of questions for O'Connor Davies.
So so with regard to journal entries though, since we have hired the deputy, the she makes the majority of the journal entries, I review her journal entries. So that duty has been segregated. I'm not making majority of them.
Who's reviewing your journal entries? And again, what you're saying is, is you're saying this is happening, but is there a formalized process in place? So if there's no policy that dictates that, then we'll need to create a policy that dictates how those journal entries are gonna be made, what type of journal entries we're talking about. But we're talking about rushing journal entries. We're talking about accruals. Are we talking about AP here? Like, what kind of journal entries are we talking about? We need policies to determine how that's going to look and what it looks like so that we understand. If we were to say, if we were to take your journal entry and say, okay, who made this entry? What's the process to make this entry, right? We need to have a formalized process that says, this is the way this entry was made. And did we follow that process, right? That's the way we create accountability. So the idea being is, okay, I hear what you're saying. So we have a formalized process. We have a policy, written policy that says this is how we're doing these things.
So you would like to specify each type of entry in the policy?
We should, we should definitely specify. We should absolutely be doing, but that's absolutely what we should be doing because we should have a formalized. Everything has to be written. You can't just say, we're gonna have a process and then not follow it because it's not written anywhere. Because then we're just running around doing whatever we want. That's not the way we're supposed to work.
We're not at all. The department has never done things that way. It has internal controls. We have segregation of duties.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is.
Definitely.
Are those, I hear you say that, but I still have not seen any written policies. And I have not seen the written controls that are in place. And that's what we need to see because we are required to achieve that.
Right.
And we're required to approve that. And if you've made changes to that, and we don't know what those changes are. Then we're failing our fiduciary duty in providing oversight. So we need these policies to be written. And we need to see them and then we need to approve them.
Is there something written at the moment?
So what we have in the office are these books with not really policies, they're step by step procedures. Does the board want to read all of this?
Can you, can you go get, can you go get the binder?
Not really.
We will do that. I'll get that to you. But I would like to go through this, this thirteen. I would like to go through this and try to get an idea of what's going on with this.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Tony, when you go through these things, can you have a policy procedure written? Some book or a document or whatever, just noted. You'd say that, that this is a written policy procedure that I have back there and then later on you can.
Okay, yeah, that's not a problem. And I will say, we don't have every single thing in a written procedure because. Over the past, I don't know how many years, we've had multiple instances of extended medical leaves and we don't have time to sit and type up. We need to get the work done. So we do have many, many things.
I I appreciate that the work needs to get done, but the idea is, is we need to make sure that we have a formalized process. That we know what to do, when it's gonna be done.
Have something, when you have something that's in a book or in a binder or something, we'll make a note as we go through here. And those things will be provided. If there's not a formal, formalized procedure and it's, well, this is the way we've been doing it. Those are the things that will have to be written out in a step by step situation that the board will approve. So perhaps we can proceed.
All right, number three, negative balance. According to this, from what I've seen, the negative balance was happening because um they were writing. Vouching without money in the lines. That's been resolved. We cannot voucher if there's no money in the line. So I mean, that's. Right, we move on.
So just just one of the recommendations John picked up here is. Ideally, actors should complete the responsibilities, including those noted above, to be spread across different individuals. This is speaking because we have a limited number of individuals in the accounting department. And so we can't, we can't assign, but you said access to add modified master file records. Should be performed by an individual separate from the personal, personnel recording transactions associated with the unit of master file. Transactions, vouchers, journal entries, check runs should be created by one individual. Approved and posted by a separate person. So. It's not, it's not offense. I think that that separation of duties, I think we we keep hearing that and it's definitely. Something that we need to concentrate on and and focus and identify in a written document that. This individual is in this and 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 identify those checks and balances that hopefully.
In small, one person offices, there is not possible to segregate these duties. Accounting entries and bank reconciliation should be reviewed monthly by a supervisor. By the supervisor. In the smallest local governments, designated member of the governing board may need to serve as a supervisory role over the accounting function. Supervisory board oversight acts as compensating mitigating controls through inadequate segregation duties. I've stated this before. That in small departments, right, where we have limited staff, the governing board has to step up and and do more work. In terms of making sure we have mitigating controls in place. So I've stated this before and I'm bringing this up again because I hear we have limited staff. But I hear also that you continuously try to exclude the board. And my goal is here, if we're gonna do this right, then we have to make sure that the board is included.
So you asked before, I oversee, I review Casey's work, I sign off on it. You ask who reviews mine. We do an independent bank rec review every three months with RVT coming in.